And we're ready whenever you are, Mayor.
Good evening and thank you for attending tonight's city's council meeting. For those who are attending remotely, the camera in the council chambers is set up to show those attending in person tonight. The platform we are using has a raise hand feature. You will notice a picture of a hand in the upper right-hand corner. When we reach the point in the meeting where the public has the opportunity to address council, you can click that button and be given your opportunity to address council. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Skelly.
Here.
Councilor Dilva.
Here.
Councilor Fisher.
Here.
Councilor Powers.
Here.
Councilor Reisch.
Here.
Councilor Scamperly.
Here.
Quorum present.
We have two presentations tonight and we will begin with City Comptroller Angela Gray.
Angela, I think you're muted. While you figure out your audio, just a note for the public, the both of the presentations have been included with tonight's webinar as a handout so you can follow along if you are attending remotely.
Good evening, council. So tonight, as part of the presentation section, we are going to review the insurance reserve fund. This came up in the last council meeting and I just wanted to kind of go through what the reserve fund is, how it functions, and give the history of that reserve fund. So in accordance with page two of the presentation, this particular fund falls under the category of a special revenue fund. A special revenue fund by definition accounts for proceeds of specific revenue sources and it is legally restricted as to what expenditures can be spent out of this fund. Turning ahead to page three, the insurance reserve fund in the city of Augsburg has two main purposes. So the first purpose is the city is self-insured against liability. So we leave money inside of this fund to cover any property damage, personal injury, but certainly not limited to those two expenses. The other purpose of this fund is that the city has elected to do unemployment insurance with the state of New York through what's called the benefit reimbursement method. This requires the city to reimburse New York State dollar for dollar in the event that they have an insurance claim versus a more typical arrangement looking at more so the for-profit side of business. Typically, people pay into this insurance reserve fund based upon a rate. That is not how the city accounts for its unemployment claims. Both of these are taken directly from the audit report, which defines why we have this fund inside the city of Augsburg. Looking at page four, I've put together a five-year analysis of this fund. Some of the numbers that were quoted in last council meeting, I just want to put a little bit of a clarity around. The first one is that interest does go into this fund. It is recorded monthly and over the years 2019 through current nine-month operations, we can see the insurance posted. It's outlined within the audit report typically titled uses of money and property in accordance with government accounting language, but that is indicative of interest with inside this fund. The average expenditure in this fund is much greater than $3,000. It actually is $205,000 per year. And I've put down its the five years of history of what's been paid out of this fund. The largest payment that we have is for insurance premiums and claims administration. We also do pay judgments and claims out of this as well. So when we look at the revenue coming into the fund versus the expenditures, every single year for the last five years, we on the surface have a deficit within this fund. However, every year in the budget, and this is the way it has been for a very long time, the general fund, the water fund, and the sewer fund transfer money over to the insurance fund in order to pay the expenses listed above. For the first three years of this five-year analysis, $85,000 went from each fund over to the insurance fund. In 2022, this amount was reduced, seeing as how the fund balance was growing. Inside this fund, this amount was reduced to $50,000 per fund and that was maintained in the 2023 budget as well. The next line down, which starts with 82,804, shows you the operation after the funds have been transferred in. And so we can see that for the first three years, we're at a surplus situation. And for the last two years, which is really one year and nine months, this fund is operating in a deficit. That deficit is being covered by the fund balance. So if we were to assess the fund balance as of 9/30/2023, the fund balance has been reduced to $617,000. Within that fund balance, $57,000, and this comes directly from your audit report, has been restricted to pay unemployment insurance claims. The rest of the money is what we call unassigned or unrestricted, and that's $559,000. Ongoing, there's always claims within any government for property damage, personal injury, and the city is not without those either. So this money is reserved to cover the future anticipation of loss within the city through our self-insurance plan. Are there any questions?
So when you say self-insure, we carry certain types of insurance, but are like 100% self-insure? I mean, we carry property damage insurance, right, for police cars, our vehicles. We have, you know, public officers liability insurance, I assume. So is what you say self-insure, is that like part of the keeping the cost of the premium now?
I can provide council a more definitive definition of what actually we do. We do have insurance within the city, what we insure against through policies versus what we self-insure against. I can delineate the two for and pass that through Andrea, City Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Angela. Next, next we have a presentation from Charles Pryor with EDR regarding a wastewater treatment plant capital improvement project update.
Good evening, folks. How you been?
Evening.
Charles and EDR, it's been about a year since we came here and gave you folks an update on the wastewater treatment plant project. So got a few slides tonight to kind of show you very close to what the finished complete project's going to look like and give you an overall status of where we're at, very close to the finish line here. All right. So the photos you'll see throughout taken spring and summer of this year depict kind of a lot of the new systems that you'll see down at the renovated facility. So on that opening slide, there's an overview shot looking at the plant. And on the left is your combined sewer overflow tank there that sits on eastern end of the site. Go to the next slide. Thank you. So just to kind of go over the project goals, what the project set out to do. Three primary items, one was comply with your consent order issued by DEC and also as part of that to comply with your effluent limitations of your plant. Second, a big goal is to improve operations of the facility as well as very safety features in and around the plant. The third thing, and very critical here, was to become a regional wastewater asset and turn the facility into a generate some offsetting revenue for your sewer fund. So touching on that first slide over there with the consent order and the pick of permit compliance, there's several bullets here, but by and large from the start of the plan as the wastewater enters the facility to the end, nearly every system was fully renovated, rehabilitated, and or upgraded or replaced as part of the project. So you're talking about what we call your preliminary, primary, secondary treatment equipment, as well as your disinfection system was replaced as well. And then all throughout, what we refer to as your solids handling, this solid settled material and how it gets handled in and around the plant and ultimately discharged away from the plant, which all were placed. A big item was also compliance with your long-term control plan. This is a plan that was approved by DEC back in 2012. There was a series of projects to come into compliance with that, the last one of which was your CSO storage tank that you see in the image there out back of your aeration tanks. Coupled with that was a brand-new pump station. The city acquired property from the Diaz Seasons, a brand-new pump station built there that collects rainwater basically during periods of heavy rain, pumps it down to that tank for storage. That tank gets discharged back into the headwear, so your treatment plant for treatment ultimately. Along with that, there's a series of pump station upgrades out late in the project as well. There's one in the Marina area at the East, it's called, referred to as East River over by Hosmer's. That one was complete back a couple of years ago. Right now, your main pump station is in the middle of construction, should be done hopefully six to eight months' time. There's three other pump stations that are deferred as the city's continuing to pursue funding for them, that being the South Water Pump Station at the psych center and then one of them by the Heavy Industrial Park as well.
My understanding was that the state owned the pump station at the psych center.
I think that's something the city's still looking into, I think, Adrian, right?
That's correct.
On the operational front there, so obviously there's new pumping and treatment equipment all throughout there. Along with that, modernized the monitoring and the communications at the facility to be real-time. That's been a pretty major improvement to the facility with the use of things such as PLC-based controls. Along with that, the control building was completely reconfigured for today's operation protocols. For example, the facility when it was originally built had a very large laboratory that was there. It was not necessary to have that much space for the work that's done at the lab, so that was truncated. And then new spaces were created for other facility, for other operational protocols that are done within the, within the control building. One of the areas I'd just like to highlight here is the picture on the lower left. That's in the lower level of the digester building and that's a new setup. Thickened sludge pumps down there, I can remember when we, when we first toured the plant back a few years ago getting underway, the lighting was very poor down there, it was a difficult place to access and you really didn't want to be down there alone. But you can see today with the lighting in the equipment layout, there's much more improvement with as it relates to the spacing down there for operators to do their job access and it's just a clean space now. You know, on the safety front, there are many improvements made around the facility to this, but a few things to highlight here. Separation of spaces between what we refer to as hazardous and non-hazardous was done all throughout the facility. There was many, many instances of this. This includes the separation too and new heating and ventilation systems. Along with that too, for the classified spaces, they all have gas detection equipment in there now to notify operators before entering a space to make sure it's safe with the air quality. The layouts of equipment were improved to provide adequate working clearances. Lighting was improved all throughout as well as access in the spaces, talking about ingress and egress into there as well. Power distribution, automatic, new emergency generation of power and various safety devices are all located all throughout the facility. The amount of power that's utilized there is quite significant. The water service, which is located on the lower level of the control building, was relocated above grade. And a very important item, we've highlighted this several times in our updates, was the elimination of the gas chlorine that was replaced with the use of ultraviolet light, which you see with the image on the right. That equipment is below grade in the channel, but you can see the, the means of access to provide the operators to the, to the equipment that's there.
How is that UV system working?
It's working pretty good. We had a, there was a situation needed to be resolved last winter. They work on with a hydraulic system. Noticed in the severe cold up here, warranted replacement of a couple of pressure-reducing and relieving items, which the operator got a hold of manufacturer and we stepped in to work to resolution on that. Understand, it's been pretty good.
The chlorine gas was essential to replace.
Oh, yes. Yeah, it was.
Chlorine, safety hazard.
High hazard, yeah. Touching on the regional asset component of the project, a couple of primary things here that were thought about very early on in the planning stage and then implemented throughout construction. One is a standalone waste receiving station. This was constructed to be able to take in outside waste from a variety of sources, be it leachate or from potentially another municipality's waste. And that's a picture of what you see here is that waste receiving station. Along with that, folks are aware, but the consolidation of wastewater with the village of Hubelton was allowed to happen as a result of the project as well. Both of these have solid potential to generate offset revenue for the, for the city and your sewer fund.
When does Hubelton actually connect?
So the pipeline between the village and the city is complete. There are some improvements at their, at their treatment facility to convert it to a full pump station. That works underway, looks to be probably within six to eight weeks or so before the physical work at the plant is done. They've tested the pipeline, pressurized it, both water. Well, we got to get the work done over at the village's treatment plant to get it to a full operational pump station. It'll just still be a few more weeks.
And once it's connected to the city's system, is it still pumped or is it just by grade?
No, it's pumped, it's pressurized.
That won't cause any problem on, was it Elizabeth Caroline, whatever street that was?
No, the line comes down Franklin, Franklin Street. Then it runs parallel to the Elizabeth Street line.
Okay, I thought it tied in out to Old City now.
No, it's a whole, a whole entirely dedicated line, doesn't tie into the city's sewer system at all, runs all the way to the tank. So just to kind of take a walk through time here, I've been here quite a few times, but the construction started in November 19, soon thereafter, we had the start of the pandemic with COVID-19. The work continued as it was to do so. And starting roughly about a year ago, we started to work towards a coordinated effort. And I say coordinated, it was operations along the city and the contractor and ourselves started to work towards what it means to get this project to completion. And then in July of this year, declared that construction was substantially complete. And you know, from that time here, we're going through what we call the final punch list or close-out items and working through resolution of the contract financially. So we're pretty close at this point, 99% plus, I think, at this point, is where we're at.
So the change order that's on our agenda tonight is the final change order?
It's correct.
And the, and the work that you were talking about with Hubelton, that's on, that's separate, it's on? That needs to be finished up, is that part of our contract or?
No, that's the village's. You know, so I touched on these already, but you know, where we're, wherever close to finishing up today, it's the final punch list items. I think we're down to maybe dozen, maybe two dozen or so items. We've got some record documentation, get from contractors, these are things like as-built drawings and such. The last item there is to resolve the contract within the approved budget. I think you have that change order on your agenda for this evening. The picture you see there is of the Elizabeth Street Station. And then show the next slide, took a nice photo, this was back from last spring. And one of the nice spring sunsets overlooking the facilities here as we were, had some buildings were looking good and had some site restoration work done with the new lighting. And then on the last slide here, you'll see these are the plaques that were done for all the major capital improvements at the site. So we were able to retain the ones from the original build in the 60s and the major project in the 70s along with a plaque dedicated to this project that was, that was put up earlier this year. Any questions, folks? I understand a few may have taken a tour recently.
Yeah, I went through it the other day. Couple of the councils here. It looks nice. Looked like a pretty intense project. One of the things I noticed is just having to shut things down to be able to, you know, re-piece everything and retool everything and get it going most of that quarter.
You know, right where the generators are out front there, there's a couple of construction trailers there. We spent many hours with ourselves, the contractor and the folks, the operations for the development authority thinking through a lot of that and how that's all to be done and keeping it compliant all throughout. It was, it was pretty intense at times.
Thank you.
Especially for a plant that operates both wastewater and, or water and, and raw sewage, you know, combined. From what I understand, we're one of the only communities around that has such a facility. So it's pretty unique and it's quite a, I was, I had the pleasure of walking on Friday through it and it's quite a, quite an undertaking.
Yeah, it's amazing. It looks, it looks very clean to finish at this point. I think to touch on your point, you know, one of the, one of the major items here was compliance with that long-term control plan. Just getting that tank done, getting that pump station done was was the capital part of it. Now comes the operations part of it. So you know, one thing I think we got it approved with DEC is what we call the post-construction compliance monitoring period, which is a plan we had to put together at the end of construction, a DEC had to approve. And now we got to go through a period here, get data with the operations. It basically, in a, in a analytically proved compliance with your long-term control plan. So that's in its infancy, it's kind of in its first or second inning. We're going to, I think, undertake that as part of next year, next spring, is the full monitoring period at the, within your collection system, so.
Very good. I like the fact that we're going to use the metronome jets itself to power generators and the other things that we got going down there. Saves a lot of money, I'm sure.
Yes, ultimately.
I was saying, Mike, when we were looking at that way back when Art Short was here, that was dreams to get that. It's been a while. So that's, that should be online soon.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome. Take care, folks.
We have one public hearing tonight regarding an ordinance amending Article X entitled Miscellaneous Charges, AR-57, entitled Miscellaneous Charges of the Administrative Regulations of the City of Augsburg. It is going to be Bill 91 and I will open that up to a public hearing now. Please come down on the podium, you'll have five minutes. Is there anyone attending remotely?
I do not see any hands raised.
I declare this hearing closed. And this brings us to public appearance. At this time, if anyone attending in person would like to address council, please come down the podium and you have five minutes.
Good evening. I am Michael Tully. I'm a citizen living in Augsburg and appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening. Since the last city council meeting, at his request, I met twice with Councilor Reisch to discuss the proposed 2024 city budget. Once before he developed his resolution on tonight's agenda, once after it was included with tonight's packet. I believe the goals he attempts to achieve in this resolution are reasonable and achievable. And I encourage the city council to modify the proposed 2024 city budget to achieve these goals. That does not mean I support the list of potential budget adjustments that accompany the resolution that Councilor Reisch presents. I shared with him adjustments I disagreed with or thought might be modified and I will defer to him to discuss with you any changes he might make to his original list of adjustments. Regarding the goals of lowering the proposed increases in the property tax levy, water rates, and sewer rates, I repeat comments that I made to city council on October 10. I believe city taxpayers need to be provided relief from the likely significant increase in property taxes resulting in city's reassessment. Combine that with the new schedule of city tax payments in 2024, which sees those making installment payments paying two-thirds of their city property taxes by the end of March compared to the current 50% by the end of May, there is great potential for city taxpayers to feel stressed early in 2024. Another reason to consider a reduction in the property tax rate to $16 per assessed thousand. In the revised schedule of the constitutional tax limit in 2024, shared with council on October 10, the constitutional tax margin remaining after adjustments is less than $800,000. To me, this is a very tight margin. I question its ability to allow the city to fund its contractual obligations over the next two fiscal years. An adjustment to $16 per assessed thousand provides modest relief, bringing this margin to about $1 million. General comments about some of the adjustments in Councilor Reisch's schedule. First, with regards to water rates, sewer rates, besides the adjustments listed, I believe each fund has sufficient fund balance to utilize to achieve proposed rate adjustments. Such use of fund balance might be in conjunction with listed proposed adjustments. Now with regards to the general fund, a reduction of the tax rate to $16 per thousand assessed reduces the property tax levy by $210,000. To accomplish this, I do not support a proposed adjustment to increase applied fund balance from $300,000 to $600,000. Personally, do not support any increase of applied fund balance above $300,000 for any reason. Returning to consideration for property tax cap override in 2024. After the last city council meeting, I researched the issue of property tax cap at the New York State Controller's website. I found the controller's publication titled "The Property Tax Cap Guidelines for Implementation", published in 2011. Section nine deals with budget process, final adoption of a budget. This section states, I quote, "A budget officer or chief executive may prepare a tentative budget that requires a tax levy increase in excess of the tax limit, of the tax levy limit. However, the governing body cannot, without first complying with override requirements, one, adopt a budget that requires a levy in excess of the tax levy limit, or two, impose or causing imposition of a tax levy to the extent that a budget requires a levy in excess of the levy limit." So I do not find in the publication reference to acceptance of a preliminary budget, but my layman's opinion is that based on the budget process in the city charter, since an accepted preliminary budget has the potential to become the enacted budget if city council fails to adopt a budget by the deadline set in the city charter, then a preliminary budget with a tax levy in excess of the limit such as you are considering cannot be accepted by city council without first adopting a tax cap override. I know that I'm not an attorney, but in simple terms, in terms, I think the city would be putting the cart before the horse if it accepts a preliminary budget with a tax increase that exceeds the tax cap without first adopting the override. Then quickly on another topic, I think we're all aware of the crisis the city of Watertown faced last week with the water main break that emptied your city water lines, resulting in emergency efforts to deal with the problem. I think it would be wise if in a future city council meeting here in Augsburg, city staff inform the community, if it has an emergency plan in place if such an event happened here and in broad terms describe what such a plan entails. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Is there anyone attending remotely?
I do not see any hands raised.
And this brings us to correspondence. Do we have any?
We do not.
Next, we have our consent agenda that the claims as enumerated in general fund warrant number 19-2023 in the amount of $764,646.10 and library warrant number 19-2023 in the amount of $0 and capital fund warrant number 19-2023 in the amount of $198,987.10 and community development fund warrant number 19-2023 in the amount of $2,030.234 and community renewal fund warrant number 19-2023 in the amount of $0 as audited, be and the same hereby are ordered paid, ISO move. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Skelly.
Yes.
Councilor Dilva.
Yes.
Councilor Fisher.
Yes.
Councilor Powers.
Yes.
Councilor Reisch.
Yes.
Councilor Scamperly.
Yes.
Approved.
We do not have any appointments tonight. Uh, we do not have any appointments tonight, so this brings us to items for council action. Our first item of business will be read by Police Chief Mark Kearns.
An ordinance amending Article ten, entitled miscellaneous charges, Article fifty-seven. Miscellaneous charges of the administrative regulations to the city of Augsburg.
I'll move that. Second.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Counselor Dilaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reese?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by Public Works Director Shane Brown.
A resolution authorizing the interim city manager to execute change order number twelve to the contract for the wastewater treatment plant capital improvement project contract with Jet Industries Incorporated.
Move that.
Second. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Dilaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reese?
I just had a question. Um, so we bonded for forty-nine million, and the total contract was thirty-nine million.
That's, that's the amount to be paid to the contractor.
Were there other charges above the, like, that's a difference to?
There are engineering fees associated with that, as well as, um, some I T-related fees that are paid to the development authority.
There, there is no surplus, really, is there?
Two-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars.
Okay. So we, we've spent up to forty-nine then?
We believe that we will, no, it's not forty-nine. It'll be forty-two. Let me tell you. Forty-two million, three-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty, I believe, is what the end price will be.
Is Angela on?
She, she is.
So did you say there was like seven million left in the bond?
I didn't, I didn't say a number.
You said forty-two, forty-two spent today and we bonded for forty-nine?
We anticipate that we will be spending, maybe Angela has those numbers in front of her.
We have taken out, uh, debt on this project, counselor, of approximately over thirty-two million dollars. So the, um, total amount borrowed is just north of thirty-two million. We did receive ten million dollars of grants on this project, bringing the total to approximately forty-two million.
We bonded for forty-nine?
No, thirty-two, sir.
That's what the resolution says. I didn't, that's what I was going by. Anyways, I vote yes. If there's any money left over and where it goes, that'd be nice to know how that works.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by City Manager Andrew Smith.
This is a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to sign a sewer service agreement modification between the city of Augsburg and the village of Hugelton.
I'll second it. So it's basically to insulate some pipes, correct, as we saw the other day, that they were freezing up in the winter?
Yeah, that's correct. And the Hugelton will be paying for the cost to insulate those pipes, and the cost associated with that is forty-two-thousand-five-hundred dollars.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reese?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Counselor Dilaba?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by Public Works Director Shane Brown.
A resolution authorizing payment to bear paving for materials and supplies as it related to street maintenance and paving.
Move that. I'll second it.
This will also be chip's reimbursement.
Thank you, Shane. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reese?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Counselor Dilaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Approved.
And this brings us to old business, and we will begin with City Manager Andrea Smith.
Mayor and council, in accordance with C fifty-nine as amended, a preliminary budget was submitted by management on September twenty-fifth. Following the presentation on September twenty-fifth, city council has the obligation under C sixty-one to accept or modify the preliminary budget on or before October thirty-first. Furthermore, C sixty-two states that, quote, "On or before the thirty-first day of October of each year, the city council shall fix a date, time, and place for a public hearing on the preliminary budget," end quote. Today is the last regularly scheduled city council meeting before the expiration of the October thirty-first deadline. However, council may certainly elect to hold special meetings, should a consensus not be achieved this evening on either of these two items. Given that the budget has not yet been accepted by council, following updated information and the determination of utility rates for twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five, I submit the following revisions on management's September twenty-fifth proposal. Our electric rate for twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five has increased from point zero four cents to point zero eight cents, an increase of approximately one-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars. This increase is split across the general fund, sewer fund, and water fund under the heat, lights, and power budget lines. The impact to the general fund is an increase of about seventy-five-thousand, seven-hundred-and-seventy dollars. There, I would like to formalize the request to reduce the increase in proposed sewer rates from twelve-and-a-half percent to six percent, as discussed at the October tenth city council meeting. This will increase the constitutional tax limit to eighty-seven-point-nine-five percent from sixty-eight-point-five-two percent, as presented in the September twenty-fifth budget. I would like to recommend reducing the water rates from four percent to three-and-a-half percent, which is equivalent to the contractual salary increases that the city will have in accordance with our five collective bargaining units, and will allow us to keep pace with increasing costs. In response to the reduction in rate, I am recommending to lower the allocation to the water reserve fund by fifty-thousand dollars, taking the recommended, uh, reserve fund from one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand to seventy-five-thousand dollars. Since submitting the budget on September twenty-fifth, there has been discussion among council regarding the proposed tax rate of sixteen dollars and fifty-eight cents, the proposed increase to water and sewer rates, as well as my proposal to maintain current staffing levels in the police department and to hire two additional firefighters. Taking into account my revisions just discussed to the water and sewer rates, based on information unavailable in September, I maintain my recommendation for a tax rate of sixteen dollars and fifty-eight per thousand, and my recommendations with regard to staffing. Given the city's fiscal position, it is my opinion that these recommendations are a fiscally responsible means of maintaining staffing and services in twenty-twenty-four. In twenty-twenty-four, contracts will be negotiated. It will be the obligation of the incoming administration to make difficult decisions with regard to how best to staff departments going forward. However, this balanced budget, as revised, illustrates that going into twenty-twenty-four, positions can be maintained and services largely preserved while maintaining the same tax rate as twenty-twenty-three. Should it be the decision of council to reduce taxes, accounting for the New York State allowable growth factor of one-point-zero-zero-zero-seven, pilot payments, and retirement exclusions, there is the potential for an allowable levy increase of up to one-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars, above the twenty-twenty-three tax levy of four-million-seven-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty dollars. However, this would require the need for council to borrow for cash flow purposes to obtain the additional sixty-thousand-dollar increase to the tax cap. Taking into account the budget reductions submitted by management in the preliminary budget, this would result in a need for council to make an additional modification equal to approximately one-point-one-million dollars. Without significant increases to revenue, one-point-one-million dollars is a reduction in staffing of approximately twelve positions. In closing, it is my recommendation to accept the preliminary budget as revised this evening and commence budget workshops immediately. It continues to be my recommendation that council call for the public hearing to override the property tax cap, which is the only option city council has if you want to avoid significant staffing cuts. An override of the property tax cap is necessary, even if council elects to reduce the tax rate to sixteen dollars a thousand, which has been suggested by members of council. Should council continue to be deadlocked at three-three, the preliminary budget as revised but unmodified by council will become the budget for twenty-twenty-four. The result of this inaction is that the residents will pay the proposed tax rate of sixteen dollars and fifty-eight per thousand. The residents will pay an increase in water rates of three-and-a-half percent and six-and-a-half percent increase in sewer rates. But the revenue collected over and above the two-percent property tax cap will not be accessible for operations, and this will unequivocally result in the loss of service and staffing as a result of council's inability to find compromise amongst your membership. In the words of John Stuart Mill, "A person may cause evil to others, not only by his actions, but by his inactions. And in either case, he is justly accountable for them to his injury." Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any old business?
So basically, that being said, uh, we need, we need to start, whether we accept this budget or not.
I suggest we accept the preliminary budget, the revised preliminary budget that the industry proposed, and then immediately start workshops.
Exactly.
In fact, I'll move that.
I'm interested in, in modifying, having a discussion about modifying the budget. I'm certainly open to other ideas, but I, I would like to present that and have a discussion about it. And, and, you know, from my standpoint, you know, it may very well not pass. I'm, I've worked hard, uh, you know, to try and find some consensus and something that I think is fair. And, um, you know, with the adoption of that, I'd be prepared to accept and to, and to vote for the two-percent override. That's, that's where I'm at.
I would think holding the budget or the two-percent, uh, tax cap right as hostage here in this situation is, is right. We got a duty here that, that wants services, and right now we have been to be responsible for this. Honestly, John, I know you put a lot of work into this. I think we need to start with the tax cap override, accepting the budget, and then working on the stuff right here that you presented.
Well, that's, that's good that you want to do that. But it's like he said, let's, let's move on to some modifications first. You've got an agenda. Keep going. Generally, that's the last thing done at the last meeting along, and you have an, and you have an agreement, you know, before, before you do that, because it's the two-percent override, you know, it, it's not a requirement that you pass that in someone's preliminary budget. The, the two-percent override is somewhere between one-hundred-and-twenty-thousand and one-point-two-million. So, I mean, you can have any kind of modifications, and then you pass it. That, that's the order you do it in.
But I just want to comment, counselor, that the, in order to have the option to override it, you have to have had a public hearing.
Yeah.
So my recommendation, since July twenty-fourth, has been for council to call for the public hearing. Whether or not you choose to override the tax cap at the same meeting in which you hold the public hearing is not my goal at this point in time. While I do think that you should override the tax cap, I strongly encourage council, as I have since July twenty-fourth, to call for the public hearing, which requires specific dates and times to be notified. And if we continue to delay action on the call for a public hearing, council is taking away your option to override the tax cap, should you choose to do that on or before the deadline of December first.
Today is October?
Twenty-third.
And the budget process goes through December one, and we have two more meetings after this?
It's completely ridiculous. We need to call.
What does it hurt to have a public meeting on this? What does it hurt?
I have no issue.
With the option movement?
I really don't. I mean, someone, you want to introduce that? I don't have any issue.
Look at these days. I mean, you know, it's by buying jobs unless we do this, and, and here you go. That's what we're looking, and that's what she's trying to tell you. That's why they're here. It's their jobs. We need to pass this.
You need to call for the public hearing. Call for the public hearing.
We need to establish the public hearing.
You made a motion, correct?
I made, my motion was not to have the, I'll, I'll rescind. Well, I never got a second anyway.
You did enough.
So with that being said, I'll move to hold a public hearing. This, what's your turnaround? Twenty-four, seventy-two?
It would be, uh, the next regular meeting, which is November four, thirteen.
Call for, I, I moved call for the, uh, public hearing related to the preliminary budget for November fourteen.
I'll second that.
You, you, you can't have a public hearing if you don't have an accepted budget. You, you can't do it. It, it, in, in, in the charter also says that you, in, in, I know you said that your, your budget takes effect, but it's.
The charter is supposed to have seven members of public hearings to, 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 to discuss the tax override.
You need five, Mike, to go over. You can have a special meeting at any time. We, we've done it all the time. Mike could call for a meeting tomorrow, or Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, doesn't matter. So your, your timeline's not, doesn't fit. And I, let's move on to do some, Counselor Reese has given you a million dollars worth of cuts. I mean, and you're saying that you can't do the budget if you, if, if you don't get this override, if you don't pass this budget right now? Well, that, that doesn't work either, and you're not going to force it through. We're, we're going to go through what the charter says. It says accept or modify. You can't put the cart or the horse.
We're calling for a public hearing to discuss the tax override, to be able to present a preliminary budget and accept a preliminary budget at some point, to be able to hold workshops, to be able to pound out a budget. The public hearing is essential to discuss the tax override. We, we call for a public hearing, the public comes in, we listen to them, and we weigh our options. Government.
Well, weigh your options, Mike.
Was there a second?
I did not hear a second.
I seconded it.
Thank you.
You know, it just, that's, I have hearing. This is state law. It's, without doing this, all people, yeah, that's, she just told us. All people, yeah, that's, she just told us.
Thank you.
Will this require four or five votes?
It would require four being incidental to the discussion of the preliminary budget.
Okay.
Would you care to read this?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry.
I can read it.
Be it resolved that proposed local law number blank of the year 2023 entitled, Amendment to Authorize an Override of the Property Tax Cap for 2024. Be and hereby is introduced before the City Council of the City of Augensberg, New York, and be it further resolved that copies of aforementioned proposed local law be laid upon the desk of each member of City Council. And be it further resolved that the City Council hold a public hearing on said proposed local law at the City Council chambers at 6:00 PM on November 13, 2023. And be it further resolved that the City Clerk publish or cause to be published a public notice in the official newspaper of the City of Augensberg of said public hearing at least seven days prior there to.
I'll move that.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Rege?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperley?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Dilliva?
No.
Counselor Fisher?
No.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Approved.
Okay. Behind us. Does anyone have any?
Could we continue talking about? Well, I mean, my modifications relate to the 2024 preliminary budget.
Want to do new business?
It comes up here for
Yeah, I just don't know why you have Police Department Community Meeting before, while we're talking about the preliminary budget. So if we can handle it now.
Consent to the council to change the agenda?
So, you know, I've read, I've read the budget. I've gone through it. I I really feel that, you know, the city's in a very difficult situation with its constitutional tax limit, as I explained to Mike, and you know, we're at 88.7% of our constitutional limit, which leaves $729,000 left over. The constitutional tax limit is 6 million, and our 24 tax levy is 5.9 million. So technically, we're at 97.8%, with exclusions, the debt that we carry, we're at 87.95. And like I said, it leaves $730,000. Contractual obligations this year, I think, were close to $300,000. You could have an insurance increase any given year of 100 or 200,000. So my point is, you're going to burn through that and not be able to pay people. Maybe in two or three years unless you use fund balance or you have significant increases in sales tax revenue. So I think that the best thing to do is to lower the tax rate a modest 58 cents, which is $210,000 out of a $13.8 million budget. It's 0.01% of the overall budget. It's insignificant, but it helps out the future council, and it ensures that contractual obligations are met. So that's my, that's my point in trying to do that. I have a legitimate concern about it, and everybody should. In terms of the, you know, the water, people are opposed to fund balance. I think there's room for fund balance, using more fund balance, but it's not necessary, given the, what I've outlined in my resolution. And to summarize, my resolution is to hire one additional police officer, which I think is necessary. I think we should have no increase in the water fund, given that we just increased our levy by $1.1 million, and people's assessments went way up. I'd like to decrease the sewer fund from 12.5% to 4%, which, you know, the conversations that Mike and I have, this is possible and what I've outlined. And again, $16 per thousand to give the city the ability to pay its contractual obligations. Fire department, through our own analysis, is going to cost, it's going to go from 4 million to 10 million in 10 years, and that does not include the raises for this year. So I, you can't go back to the people and ask for revales because we're already at our maximum constitutional limit. And if you exceed the constitutional limit, which is in the state constitution, then the comptroller is required to take your $1.7 million in state aid. So we need to act and do something. And I think we should go lower than 16, but I'm trying to make it palatable for the rest of council, just to give them an extra 200,000, and then hope and pray that sales tax increases. I mean, are there other sources of revenue? I don't think there are. Your fund balance is going to, is going to be depleted over time.
The problem with that is that that revenue is needed in this budget.
Well, I've outlined, you know, potential changes, the total $1.1 million. And, you know, just for an example, with this resolution, I have to find it. You know, you could take 10,000 from the reserve fund, which isn't necessary to set up. You could take 145,000, which is a transfer from other fund. Can you explain that, please?
Yes, that is the city's matching funds that we have to put forth to address the dock repairs to the city docks following the December 24th storm that we have a FEMA award for. But the FEMA award is a 75-25% match, so that's part of that 125. And the other, another part of this is also matching funds for the demolition of 30 Main Street, which is underway. In fact, both projects are underway. So that is necessary funding to ensure that those two projects are completed.
That's why I asked for that before. I mean, that could come out of fund balance conceivably, right? It doesn't necessarily have to be appropriation in the general fund. So that's a possible, that's still a possibility. Sales tax, we just received a huge payment.
You skipped over your interest in penalties. Would you like me to respond to that?
No, no, ma'am. I'm summarizing. I'm only summarizing the ones I want us to consider tonight. So
I think this should be done in our, our budget workshop.
But, but this is, you only have one opportunity to modify the budget before the manager's budget automatically goes into effect if you don't adopt one. So that's the point. It says accept or modify, so this is the appropriate time to do it.
This is the only, yeah.
So sales tax, we received our biggest payment yet in the month of September. And I, and I, from my own numbers and my own estimates, we will exceed our sales tax budget. Wish I had the paper. We will, 12-month projection, 2.725, so we will exceed our budgeted by something about $125,000, so I don't see any harm. Mike agrees. You know, just going with last year's number generates $75,000. And GF 400, we didn't agree with what I had proposed. Mike saw there was 102,400 that come out of GF 100. And 37,500 out of GF 500. And you're looking at a million, $1.4 million budget line, and you're taking less than 10% out of it. Same with code 0.5. You could reduce law by 50,000, and those six items would generate which is way over the 210 that we need, and it would pay for the police officer as well. So that's, that's my proposal. And if we can compromise and do that and get four votes, then I'm in favor of accepting and overriding the 2% tax cap. Then there's, there's a whole list of other possibilities here.
Don't we, we have a $1.9 million deficit. If we accepted the override, the 2% tax cap, that still leaves us 800,000. Correct?
No.
No?
I, no, I don't think so.
I just wanted to comment on some of your proposed reductions. So law was increased at the request of council, taking into consideration that we do have two union contracts that will expire and needs to be negotiated in 2024. So we did a very modest increase to the law line to account for additional expenses that we do anticipate over and above just standard legal counsel, as well as representation on a number of outstanding litigation claims.
I'm just trying to get to a compromise here. I, you know, fund balance is a whole other animal, and I'm not proposing to use anything above what staff's recommended. But
I appreciate your efforts. I just want to be able to respond because the numbers in the preliminary budget are not ill-conceived of, and I've provided a great level of detail to council with regard to what the 400, 500 codes are, as well as the 200 and 300 codes are in each department across the board. We have already made significant cuts, which is why we aren't looking at a $2 million deficit.
You're not under the impression that we don't have any say in the budget, are you?
Absolutely not. Absolutely not.
I didn't say anything about the budget. Not, but I thought you did a good job on the budget. I'm just trying to find a compromise so that we can accomplish and get this done. And I think a miniscule amount of $210,000 in one police officer is very reasonable for this community and puts us in a better position. So I would make that motion.
Motion to accept these changes?
Yes. No, not the million, the ones I just outlined. A cop, $16,000, 0% in water, and 4% on sewer.
Your numbers are all just pie in the sky.
They're rock solid, and I had an accountant look them over.
They are not rock solid.
Just, just so you are aware, if you go forward that you will, just the changes to the general fund, you can't adopt or accept any budget other than a balanced budget. So right now, you have to have cuts that are equal to no less than 300,000, specific cuts, modifications, if you will, to the preliminary budget because I have read, I have mentioned to council, on average, we would anticipate the cost of one police officer to be about $90,000. And as has been discussed tonight and at the last council meeting, reducing the tax rate to $16 is about $210,000. So that is a change in the general fund of $300,000. So you, you can make that modification, but you'll also need to either increase the revenue line by that amount or decrease expenses somewhere else, and you'll need to be specific with that.
I just specified, and they totaled $410,000. And I'm perfectly happy Andrea was leaving staff to handle the details. I'm just giving direction as a or, you know, council would just give direct, we set policy, and I'm perfectly happy with, you know, how it's handled, but I've taken the burden on myself to detail those. The total is 310, and I just presented 410.
So you're proposing to do away with the reserve fund of 10,000? You're proposing to do away with the city's match for repairs to the docks and the demolition of 30 Main Street?
I'm proposing not to put it in the general fund and have it come out of, you know, the fund balance.
Our fund balance is, I did also just prepare a report to council on that. It is 15% below the recommended level by the New York State Comptroller's Office. And you're recommending
General, unfortunately, we haven't received this information, but the general fund, fund balance is 2.1 was the last information I had.
You received an email on Sunday, counselor.
We got this email.
Oh, I didn't get
The fund balance, general fund is 15% lower than state recommended. It's just over 2 mil.
Okay. So 2.1, we're going to get 188,000 from St. Lawrence County tax foreclosure for 2022.
21. The 118 is for the 2021, what they owe.
So I, you know, in '23, we're also going to get another payment from the county, which isn't accounted for. I think that's reasonable to call it $200,000. That brings it up to 2.1.
I don't mean to interrupt, but the money that you're receiving from St. Lawrence County on unpaid taxes where they're making the city whole is already factored into your fund balance. It's not going to change your fund balance. We have a receivable on the books.
Do you have a receivable?
Those are unpaid taxes. So those are taxes that a property owner would have paid but chose not to pay. So they're only making the city whole. We are not generating any additional revenue by being made whole by St. Lawrence County.
And do we have an estimate on how much we would spend of the 1.7 million that we allocated this year in fund balance for 2023? I, I mean, that's an important estimate. I mean, is it $500,000 at the end of the year? Is it a million? I don't think we've gotten our state aid payment yet, and so how is income and expenses tracking over the first three quarters, and what would you expect to be left over at the end of '23 to add to fund balance?
We have, we are starting to, as we typically do this time of the year, to try to estimate if there will be a surplus. But our numbers presented thus far assume that all budget allocations are spent to their allocated budget.
Even though we just reduced the 2024 by $700,000, we spent that last year. Yeah. 23.
At this time, I don't have a number. I'm not going to, I'm not going to guess.
You know, if you look at all four funds, not that it's, you know, we're talking about general fund, but we have in all four funds.
6.1?
Closer to 7 million. So I think that 140,000 we could live with. So that's, that's my proposal, and I hope people would consider it. I'd appreciate a second, and perhaps it's a way to compromise a little bit and help people out at the same time and help out the future council. But I don't know any
I think a good compromise is that we would have, we'd have workshops and all work on it together.
I agree, Mayor.
And that would be a good approach, since that's always been the approach, so.
I'll second it. I'll second it.
With that being said, John, it's evident how much work you put into this and through the thought process. And, you know, surely, some of it's surely worthy of discussion later down the road. We've got a couple of many details that we need to take care of prior to that.
Well, this is, this is the only opportunity to modify. Because if that, you know, under what we passed, it has to be modified by October 31st. Otherwise, the proposed preliminary budget goes into effect.
Well, I don't know if that's going to actually be able to happen by law through the, the comments Mr. Tooley made earlier as to the, the
Well, yeah, that's a problem.
The preliminary budget being proposed.
That's why, you know, if we can do this, if we can do this tonight, then I'm good, I'm good on 2%. I'm good on accepting, and I think we're getting a lot closer to having five votes to do that.
I think, you know, we listen to the public, we talk, you know, the public has their input. They should have their input. They come in, we talk about the tax cap override, get that done, and then we, and then
I mean, we're not opposed. I mean, are you opposed to adding a police officer?
I'm not, but John, I, I, John, I told you, I can, I can respect the amount of work that you put into this, and a lot of it is worthy of discussion without question. And you, you, you're, you're asking a question that you already know the answer to.
Yep.
So, you know.
That's why I understand. So I'd appreciate your vote.
So, well. John's way or, or John's not going to play and hold everything up, so.
It's, 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 it's not that way. I'd like to make another motion. I'd like to, can you hear me, Mike?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to amend Counsel Rees's. And I'd like to make a motion to have no increase in the waterfront, the four percent in the sewer fund, the property tax rate to go to the sixteen dollars and no new hires.
So he's amending.
So he's amending here.
I'll, I'll second that. Can you, can you read that back to us, Kathy?
Counsel Rees's or Counsel Fisher's?
Fisher's.
Counselor Fisher made a motion to amend the motion made by Counselor Reese to have no increase in the water rates, a four percent sewer increase, sixteen dollars per one thousand tax rate and no new hires.
I'll second that.
It's been seconded by Counsel Dillaba.
Oh, okay.
Kathy, would you call the roll?
So we first need to call the roll on the motion that Counselor Reese made, unless he wishes to withdraw that and change it to.
He's amending mine, you have to do his first, right?
We can't amend yours, he can't amend yours until yours is approved. So the proposal would be that you could withdraw your motion, because your motion is simply the same as Counselor Fisher's with the exception of the hire, if you're in agreement with that. If not, your motion would stand and we would call your.
So I can withdraw, we'll take his first and then I can reintroduce it.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So you're withdrawing? Thank you. Mayor, would you like me to call the roll on Counselor Fisher's motion?
Yes, please.
Counsel Scamperly?
No.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counsel Dillaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
No.
Counselor Reese?
Yes.
Approved.
So right now we have a preliminary budget.
Yes. And we have a call for a public hearing. Do you want to call for, uh, do you want to call for another hearing for the whole budget, Andrea?
Hand Kathy, she just has something to say.
I just wanted to point out that that was a motion to amend. We haven't, they have not accepted the preliminary budget. I think there should be, if that is their intention, I think for the record, there should be a roll call to accept the preliminary budget as amended by Counselor Fisher's motion.
That's fine.
As modified, yeah.
As modified, correct.
It still calls for a tax cap override.
Does it, yes. Well, it does?
Yes. Yeah, yeah, but still, you're still, you're still way over.
Yes, 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 okay. As long as it goes to the sixteen dollars, because if not, there's no, not going to be any money for next year's budget.
So the changes that impact the general fund, the removal of the two firefighters is an increase in expenses of approximately two hundred and fifty thousand, decreasing the tax rate, as we've talked about, it's about two hundred and ten thousand. So that is, uh, we, you need to make up four hundred and sixty thousand dollars in the general fund to have a balanced budget.
And I'm sure, I'm sure staff can do it.
You can't, you, you just can't accept a preliminary budget with a deficit.
No, it's not, it's not a deficit. I think that we're, we're asking staff to, to work out the details. We got plenty of time to do that.
You made some slight modifications to.
If, if you need to, take it out of the fund balance, whatever you have to do.
And then you, for now.
This isn't a dictatorship here.
I mean, John, you made, you made some modifications to your original.
There'll be a vote, so it's not a dictatorship.
Correct. I mean, you, you, you shared with all of us earlier when you broke it down, you made some modifications from this to get us to where we are now. So, but I don't have a lot of that. I mean, you, you talked a lot about it. I don't have it in front of me. You know what I mean?
Well, first we have to vote to accept the budget, so.
But you, you cannot vote to accept a budget with a deficit or a surplus for that matter. So you can, you have to come up with the equivalent cuts or increases in revenue.
And I think what we're doing is giving direction.
Direction to you, and this is what we want the rates at.
Yep.
I mean, it's pretty simple.
Could we include in this resolution to money from the fund balance and then staff could work and see if.
You can do that. You just have to do something that is the equivalent to your changes.
That's fine.
So we can't move on any preliminary budget until we see it all completely to see whether it's a balanced budget.
To balance the general fund budget, you'll have to increase revenue or decrease expenses by four hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
See this.
Yes, you can. You just put in, like Mike said, you use the general fund or fund balance.
Fund, that's balanced. And then if staff could do anything to maybe, you know, you, that can come forward and we can continue on with this process.
I can't, I can't support this without seeing everything in front of me, everything that's been proposed here. And, and I know there's a lot, a lot of it's been going back and forth, but I don't know whether or not it's going to provide a deficit or if it's going to be a balanced budget.
Somebody just has to, if it is the intention to use fund balance to modify the preliminary budget, that needs to be amended to be part of this motion.
Yes, can you?
Yes, go ahead.
With that resolution temporarily?
It's just an edit to a resolution.
I mean, it's not a final budget, it's preliminary budget. So we'll use the fund balance and then go on.
But you're directing staff to do.
Kathy, can we read the back?
I'm sorry, Counsel Fisher, I didn't hear you.
Could you read back the resolution as, as it's amended now?
Yes. Um, it would be to no increase in the water rate, four percent sewer increase, tax rate at sixteen dollars per thousand and no new hires.
Yep. And put in there, like Mike said, that if it's necessary to, so we can move on, that if it's, if necess, if it's necessary, we will pull it from fund balance or, or whatever.
So you're making a motion to amend, to approve the use of fund balance to balance the preliminary twenty twenty four budget?
Correct.
Yeah. And, and direct staff to find as many cuts as possible before we have to get vote on this, the, the, the finished product. We'll have opportunities down the road also, but this, this is good for now.
So you're cutting two more firemen at a cost of increase to the budget.
We're not cutting two, we're not hiring two.
There's a hiring freeze on Dan, it's been on for months. I don't know where everybody's been. But you don't put that in a preliminary budget when you have a hiring freeze. I'm sorry, but that was the direction that was given months ago. So I didn't put them in there, so I, it's not, I'm not taking them out.
Motion to call the question and vote on the amendment as, as written.
It hasn't been seconded, sir. I need a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mayor.
And you're going to read it back to us and then we'll vote.
I can read it back to you, yes.
Thank you.
So there's no increase, the proposal is no increase in the water rate, four percent increase in the sewer rate, tax rate at sixteen dollars per one thousand, no new hires, um, use of fund balance to balance the twenty twenty four preliminary budget and direct staff to find as many cuts as possible, was moved by Counselor Fisher and seconded by the mayor.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Would you please call the roll?
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counsel Dillaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
No.
Counselor Reese?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Absolutely no.
Approved.
So high level, uh, that will take the fund balance to roughly thirty percent of what is recommended, uh, by the New York State Comptroller's Office.
So another fifteen percent, which you projected Thursday, or yesterday, I should say.
Correct.
Correct, thank you.
Yeah, the fund balance is just a stopgap. Uh, I mean, there's a whole slew of possibilities that.
Just wanted to provide you with an update of what the ramifications are of the resolution.
Thank you, Andrea.
It just doesn't make sense that we would hire those two firemen. I just don't.
There you go, Mike.
Got to be personal, it's got to be personal. I mean, is there a hatred?
There's nothing personal, don't say it's personal. You want personal, I get, I get emails.
A bunch of guys.
You want, you want personal. I, I, you want personal, I get emails from a Marine that's very, very upset with his person.
So if council would like, um, to accept the preliminary budget as modified, that would be the next step, uh, that would need to be moved and seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry, can you say that again?
If council wishes to accept the preliminary budget as modified, uh, that needs to be moved and seconded.
I'll make that motion. Go ahead, I'll second it then.
Without having it, uh, all of it in front of us.
Yes.
You will have it, it's primary. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counsel Dillaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counsel Powers?
No.
Counselor Reese?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
No.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Approved.
And this brings us to new business, and we will begin with City Manager Andrea Smith and Police Chief Mark Kearns.
Sorry, just one more, um, item before we do that, um, Mayor. Since the budget has been accepted, uh, modified and accepted, I would recommend that council establish the date for the public hearing, uh, that is the other requirement by charter to be done on or before the thirty first. Then, and then next regular meeting would be the thirteenth, that would be customary.
So Counsel Reese, are you making that motion?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mayor. Would you like me to call?
Yes, please.
Counsel Fisher?
What was that forecast? Sorry.
It is, uh, to call for the public hearing on the now accepted twenty twenty four preliminary budget to be held on November thirteenth at six P M.
Yes.
Counsel Powers?
Yeah, yeah, that's all.
Is that a yes?
No.
Counsel Reese?
Yes.
Counsel Scamperly?
No.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counsel Dillaba?
Yes.
Approved.
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner, similar.
And.
So other, new business?
Uh, yes, a new business. Uh, I believe that's, uh, you Andrea and Chief Kearns?
Yes, so I just wanted to, uh, remind the public that this Wednesday, October twenty fifth, at six thirty here at City Hall, the Augsburg Police Department will be holding a, a community meeting, uh, and that community meeting will be broadcast for remote viewing, uh, that it won't allow for remote participation, but it will allow for remote viewing. So it's Wednesday, the twenty fifth at six thirty P M. right here at City Hall.
Thank you. Um, does anyone else have any new business?
I was going to bring it up during budget time, but it's not necessarily new business. I thought you were moving on to a different discussion.
Okay, I, I lose for discussion.
Just one real quick here, recognizing, uh, the potential, uh, reviewing the budget and forecast for insurance coming up in twenty twenty four, recognizing that the rates are probably going to be accelerated a little bit. I know that the state is seeing a significant increase due to, uh, many, many deficits that are reported by insurance companies. So be interesting to see what the forecast for that might look like, if we have any idea, uh, going forward, uh, for any of our insurance rates and, and co-pays and things of the like.
Anyone else? And this brings us to citizens' participation. At this time, anyone attending in person would like to address council, please come down to the podium and you'll have two minutes.
Uh, yes, Michael Tooley again. Um, I would ask that, um, before the next meeting, that based on the revisions to the preliminary budget accepted tonight, if we could have a detailed line item of those changes, uh, and modification posted on the city's website as soon as possible, to all those of us who have interest in continually providing input in, in the discussion, the opportunity to offer suggestions with regards to changes, uh, from what you just adopted this evening, uh, particularly with regards to the expanded use of fund balances as a stopgap. Um, a clarifying question, the, 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 the information you see with regards to fund balance, general fund fund balance of two point one million, that's as of what date?
That is as, um.
Is it a projection to be done with this year or is it December of twenty two?
That's a projection, sorry, um, projection as of the end of the year.
Of the twenty three.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then, um, this could be part of the presentation with regards to the self-insurance program, but I, I would be curious to know if the, uh, uh, city self-insurance program, uh, what the limits of coverage are for the excess insurance coverage that you're purchasing, um, to see what those limits are, uh, as well. Are you carrying some type of self-insured retention? Um, or are you getting a dollar one insurance coverage, uh, for a claims file? Um, you know, an idea in, in regards to operating a self-insurance program to allow the opportunity to build reserves so that you can have a self-insured retention or, or deductible that'll allow you to get lower premiums when you go back out to bid. So I'd be curious about that, that information as well. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Is there anyone attending? Oh.
I just want to say that the behavior tonight is ridiculous. I've never been so embarrassed. There's, there's kids here, there's younger people here, and you sit up there and argue about a word. Unreal. I can't believe it. And I have a question, is, um, have you gotten, have you really gotten, are you city manager now or are you still intern?
You, you don't talk to staff or counselors individually, you talk to us as a whole, please.
Are we paying you?
Yeah, now look, now who's looking at, and acting a certain way.
What?
Yeah, I, I, I just explained the rules to you and that's how.
She's interim, she's interim.
She's intern?
Yeah.
Because you just keep on calling her city manager all the time, it's just confusing. I think you should correct him when he says that. And are we not going to get any more cops? So the people are going to go and start doing their stuff like they did on October fourteenth, like shooting? That's going to take over our city now? Nobody's got an answer. Well, I hope it's not one of your family members or anybody that's close to you that gets shot or gets run over or whatever. I think it's totally ridiculous.
Is there anyone else? Anyone remotely attending?
The first individual is registered as Penny Sharrow, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted. Appears your line is open.
Okay, it's, it's too bad we can't all get together on something, but, uh, it appears that the hiring freeze appears to be being used at your convenience. To say we can't hire another policeman is ridiculous, I have to agree. Obviously, you're not thinking of the citizens in this case, maybe it hurts, maybe until it hurts you. Hopefully it will not. And no additional firemen to be at least appropriated for in case we have an unforeseen injury or early retirements. Speaking of firemen, we lost your frivolous lawsuit that you put out there that cost us thousands of dollars trying to break the Taylor law. We've been paying, we, have we been paying what we owe? Or are you just trying to leave that for the future council to come in and try and figure out where the money's going to come from? Some of you people aren't here year round. That must be a night, that's nice. But the, the, actually, the way the places are being broken into and the way the streets are right now, for you not to hire another policeman is ludicrous. And I'd like to know if we're paying the firemen what we owe them or if you're going to just dump it in the lap of the next people. Thank you.
Anyone else?
The next individual is registered as Ann Loffler, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted. It appears your line is open. You're welcome.
Thank you. Um, I have to agree, not hiring another officer, you need more than one.
Um, I have to agree, not hiring another officer, you need more than one. I mean, we're down one. Just had another one leave. So that makes us with less than we had. The streets out there, I don't know if you guys live in a bubble or what. At ten minutes before Wednesday morning, my security camera caught two guys dressed in black on the side of my house. Two weeks ago, my car was at my son's. My grandson's hundred dollar Nike backpack got taken. And there was a Chromebook and a scientific calculator that belonged to the city school district. They were taken. Night after night, these people are out. You know, I I I just don't understand what you guys are thinking. I I honest to God, I don't. These devils go hand in hand with the drug traffic in this town. They're not stealing stuff to feed their families, to sell to feed their families. It's to feed their habit. The drug, if you would have got a handle and not cut the officers and got the drug problem under control, we wouldn't be going through what we're going through right now. Dust hits and people are scared half to death. And I agree with the lady that was up there. Somebody's going to get hurt. Somebody's going to get shot. People are panicking. The number of posts you see on Facebook locked and loaded, and 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 that's not B F. People are. It's ridiculous. You have got to do something. You vowed to keep this city safe. We are not safe. There's kids in these houses. The kids aren't safe.
Thank you, Ann. Is there anyone next?
I do not see any other hands raised.
Okay, thank you. Now, no, it it's all done, sorry. Um, now, um. Oh, did you?
Yes, I did.
I didn't see, I'm sorry.
This is my first meeting, so thank you. Um, I've lived in the burg for about fifteen years. My husband had a good job here, so I moved here and I felt very safe. But since that, the last six months, I have gotten a dog, I have gotten a gun, three tasers. And the other night I was sitting there and this guy walked by with a flashlight. So I looked at him and he started grunting and he ran away. I've called the cops a couple of times for different things. I have a nice home and I live in a nice section. I am scared to death. I'm thinking about moving. If somebody wants to offer me eighty five thousand, my house is for sale today. Because this, I'm a widow now. I'm afraid. And I've had the cops, I've called them, but they can't come because I have no one. I had a moving van in my yard. I'm not moving. And the guy bolted out of it like a bat out of hell. And I was so afraid, I went in my garage and then found out it was going to the drug house. I called the cops, but they never came. Later on, I had another car there. I called the cops. Can you just have a dog stop around the car? No one came and it's not there. They have no help. So honestly, I hate this place now. I can't wait to get out of here. I'm scared. So if 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 it comes to that point, I will draw my gun and I don't have a clue on how to friggin' use it, but I've got one. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, now I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session. To discuss medical, financial credit, employment history, particular person or corporation.
I'll second it.
Kathy, Kathy, would you call the roll?
Counsel Powers?
Yes. I'm sorry.
No, no.
You got it?
I got, I got it. Sorry, I was looking for Counsel Rish. Counsel Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counsel Dillaba? Counsel Fisher?
Yes.
Approved.
Um, we're not coming back, are we?
It's on, it should be on your paper, Mayor.
I don't have it.
Ran out? It's my understanding that you do not anticipate any action. So we'll need a motion to adjourn from executive session.
I had to read part.
Okay.
We do not anticipate any action. I will make a motion to adjourn from executive session. All favor, aye. Opposed, adjourned.